Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, and this is a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to recognize the passing of Connie Preston. Connie was a dedicated and beloved staff member of the Russell Memorial Library for over 20 years. After her retirement, Connie remained as active as ever with the Friends of Acushnet Public Library, which she co-founded, serving as its secretary until late 2020. She was instrumental in advocating for a new library building and led the Acushnet 1000 fundraising initiative. She designed the popular books buying donut board. Mrs. Preston took extreme pride in the town of Acushnet and served on the beautification committee for many years. She was an avid gardener and generously shared her knowledge as well as her clippings. She will be remembered and missed by library patients and staff members alike. Gentlemen, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in memory of Connie. Thank you very much. At this time on our agenda, we're going to enter into executive session on the General Law Chapter 30C, I mean, General Law Chapter 30A subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining health insurance or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. In view of matters presented, votes may be taken. Roll call vote, Mr. Woner.
Yes.
Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We will adjourn to executive session. At this time, because of the timing of our meeting, we will recess from executive session and open back up in public meeting.
To return to executive session at 4:45 or the time we can for the technology involved.
Very good.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have minutes that need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. We have minutes from November 19th, 2021, regular session. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Next on our agenda, we have the Town Administrator Report. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Chairman, since the last meeting, I have visited every job site except DPW. We're waiting on that because I'm also meeting with the union rep this Thursday.
Okay, very good.
And you've got the budget issues we will deal with later in the meeting. And you know the town meeting dates, snow and ice status. DPW still projects a deficit of $115,000. We also have deficits right now in town council account of $3,000 as of March 1, and public safety over time, we're monitoring, and we're projecting as high as $200,000. That's for both police, fire, EMT dispatch. Financial, the town accountant has closed the books, submitted Schedule A, and completed the balance sheet. Free cash is expected to be certified by DOR Honor before April 15. Once we know the certified amount, further prioritizing of the capital request can commence. I have done a draft of capital items in the memo that will subsequently follow in the budget session. And the town meeting articles will also be addressed at that point. Not the articles themselves, but what we have so far and what we expect. Department head meeting was held on March 8. You have the agenda forwarded to you under a previous cover. You will get the minutes when they are completed. You have the settlement already. And the defibrillator gift is progressing. If, Mr. Woner?
The Fabian family will be in on the 29th. Chief Gallagher has gone forward and executed that purchase order, so I think we should be all ready to go there.
Excellent.
As far as infrastructure, I have met with Serpide, and we've put together a team composed of the town planner, the DPW director, and myself as senior members. It also includes the stormwater agent, the DPW business manager, police chief, and fire chief. The purpose of the team is to plan and coordinate infrastructure projects, grants, including the master plan update. We need to, it's not a full master plan, it's just an update. We need to update it to be eligible for any grants from the Commonwealth in this area. And we're also looking at the five- and 10-year capital plan. And the Assistant Treasurer Collector offer has been made and accepted, and she is here tonight.
Very good.
And other than the budget and the financial discussion that comes later, that's the body of my report.
Excellent. Very good. We'll move on to meeting mail. Gentlemen, we've given notice that the town is receiving $314,192 for Chapter 90 money. So that will go to road repair and to--
David.
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 Mr. Chairman, we are still waiting for a definitive letter from the supplemental budget for fiscal year '22 for additional Chapter 90 money. Once we get that letter, we will forward that to you, too.
Okay, very good.
This is for fiscal '23.
No motions needed. Motion to accept.
Just open your arms wide and make sure they--
It's in line with the previous years. It's too bad. He ain't going to cover the cost of inflation, right?
No. Piping is doubled, both sewer and water pipes per foot.
Gas wells and petroleum base, look what that's done, right?
We're waiting to see about that.
Very good. Next on the meeting mail, we have an email from Dean in St. Pierre, library director for the town of Acushnet. And St. Pierre says that-- "I've extended my thanks to Mr. Merritt directly, but wanted to make you all aware as well. After the blizzard this year, it became obvious that the library staff need a way to safely and quickly close off the library's deck ramp and stairs in inclement weather. In addition to typically not having a custodian working during an active storm to keep up with shoveling, sweeping, or treating, the deck entrance can become quite slippery even in a heavy rainstorm. I spoke with Mr. Merritt about a simple yet effective way to block the ramp and stairs. Earlier today, Tyler and Miguel were able to install these chains." She's provided a photo of the installation that was made. They made a temporary signage, and as of an hour ago, we've closed off the area to the side door. "As we've discussed, Mr. Merritt and his department have offered assisted library with building issues and concerns, and as always, we appreciate their work. Thank you for your time." Very good. All right, yes. With an agenda, we have two appointments. Tonight, we have Carla Moreo.
Moreo.
Moreo. Nice to meet you, Carla.
Likewise.
Carla, if you'd like to step up to the podium.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have discussed, after the interview panel recommended this applicant. I have discussed with her the process, and we have come to an agreement as far as our recruitment rate. It is because of her extensive experience in payroll, which is a prime function of this job, and extremely extensive experience with Munis software. And the fact that we need someone in this job who not only has the experience in dealing with payroll, but in Munis, and can hit the job running because we are really behind the eight ball in that office right now with experienced folks.
Very good, Carla. Now you know--
Nope, no pressure.
Put on my sneakers, they're running.
Carla, just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, I am Carla Moreo, and I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to all. I'm so honored to be here today, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Benfeto for their time and effort to make this happen. Serving the residents as part of the public sector is my field of expertise. With 26 years of experience, I have extensive knowledge in Munis, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, accounting, payroll, debt overflow calculations, reconciling receipts, and preparing various financial reports. At my previous position with the City of New Bedford, I allocated and managed a $20 million operating budget and financial records for the fire department. During this time, over $30 million in audited federal grant funds ran through my hands without any issue. Since moving to Acushnet two years ago, I have felt that I needed to be more of an integral part of this community and a sense of belonging. I feel this position will help me attain just that. I have the heart, work ethic, and dedication you need to get the job done and to keep our residents satisfied. Both professionally and personally, I have always strived to achieve my full potential as well as inspire others to do the same. I have a track record of delivering results regardless of the project scope and size and always looking to help others. I've served on several boards throughout the years, most notably, serving as chairperson of the Campbell Elementary School's playground project, which was named after Sergeant Sean M. Gannon, who was shot and killed in the line of duty in April of 2018. In just one year, we raised over $200,000 to fully fund this project. This playground was open to the public in October of 2019, and I welcome all families to visit. I'm extremely proud of that job, and I'm humbled to have been a part of it. I'm looking forward to working together and providing support wherever I'm needed. But above all, I'm looking forward to helping the residents of the town of Acushnet, my new neighbors. Thank you.
And I am very familiar with that playground on Phillips Road.
Thank you.
That was done very nicely.
It was a bittersweet project.
Absolutely.
But I was so honored to be a part of it.
Excellent, excellent. Mr. Woner?
I mean, look, the qualifications speak for themselves. I think what's impressive to me is, you know, having your family here. I think that speaks to the type of person you are. The fact that we've got somebody with this level of expertise but is also a town resident, I think is really critical because, you know, you're going to be a steward of this town hall while you're here and while you're out of the building. So I support this appointment with my full weight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it's an honor, first of all, to meet you. And we've always, my colleagues and myself and my past colleagues as Board of Selectmen members, we always try to put precedence to a resident first when applications come in. It's one of the first things I look at when I look at resumes, is see where that person's from. So I was very happy to see that you are an Acushnet resident. It means a lot to me that you applied here, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much for your support. I appreciate it.
Very good. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to accept the interim town administrator's recommendation for the appointment to Assistant Treasurer Collector of Carla Moreo?
Moreo.
Moreo.
You'll get it.
Yes, it'll be a couple of weeks.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Carla.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
Can I have a copy of your speech?
Sure.
Would you like me to take a two-minute recess? And if the board and Carla wanted to stand, you could take picture.
Sure. We take a two-minute recess. Do I have a motion to take a two-minute recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, I have a motion to call the meeting back to order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next under appointments, we have IAC recommendation and discussion. And do we have anyone here from IAC?
Mr. Chairman, this was a placeholder in case they had a recommendation for the board concerning health insurance. You are going to be meeting with your consultant at 4:45, so I imagine that we'll put this over for the next meeting.
Very good, very good. And next on the agenda, we have budget discussion articles. First up is presentation and discussion of the summary budget.
I'd like to go to the warrant and budget recommendation memo that's in your packet under number six.
Number six. Where's number six, Amy?
Well, it's a little different under yours. It'll be under--
It's under budget discussion.
Right after appointments. Right there.
I know, but I was going back to this because this is budget stuff, too.
Yeah. Is yours?
Okay, very good. Excellent. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, in the memorandum, I am recommending that the town meeting create three new stabilization funds. One would be a health insurance stabilization fund to assist in funding increased costs to the town's share of the health insurance and to contribute if there is a health reimbursement account to that account beyond what would be in the operating budget. It's to smooth out any spikes in increases like you've seen in health insurance this year by putting money into a stabilization account. The second is accrued liabilities for compensated absences. That's to yearly put some money into a stabilization account that can be used for the buyouts, the sick leave buyouts, et cetera, when people are retiring, rather than take it out of the department's operating budget. Because if it's taken out of the operating budget and you're not able to predict it at budget time, then you're going to be stripping the funds out of that or going to the reserve account. I also am recommending a stormwater systems improvement and MS4 compliance stabilization fund. As you go on through your infrastructure improvements in the stormwater area and your compliance with MS4, it's important to have a funding source. It's also important, if you're going to go for any loans from the clean water fund that the state has, that you have someplace to put those loans. Those loans are zero interest with five years to pay them back.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar?
Before we move past that, on the accrued liabilities compensated balances, we have a budget right now for that number, right? And we know it was underfunded for the past two years. We had a pretty good deficit last year and the year before. By creating a stabilization fund, it would require a two-thirds vote to get the money out, wouldn't it? So if we get away from, if we take, are we dissolving the budget, the compensated balances budget that we now presently have? I think it's funded at like 15 grand. It's not much. If we dissolve that and we move to a stabilization fund, what happens in the case when we have that exiting of an employee and we have to do that payout? You're not able to pay them because you have to do a town meeting in order to extract funds from that money. So would we set it up like we do our enterprise funds? Would we have a little buffer in there that we could draw?
The revolving funds or the enterprise funds?
It's like a little reserve fund.
Right. But you can also leave some money in that compensated balance line item.
The budget.
But you would be able then to, from free cash--
Build.
--build this up. And you would know prior to when someone's retiring, when they're retiring, and if they give you notice after the annual town meeting and you have a fall town meeting, you can appropriate it then.
Yeah, it's just a large gap between the two meetings.
And you can pay for it out of the salary account and replenish the salary account if you need to out of this account.
Okay, okay. Well, that explains it. It's just tough because if you get somebody that--
It's a bank account for--
Sure. But I just didn't know if we were going to close out the budget that we already have because that's where you could just go, once it's appropriated in town meeting, you can go and pay out from that. In a stabilization fund, you're required to have a town meeting, two-thirds vote--
Correct.
--to remove the funds from there. And that person could be gone six months from the next, and how does he get paid or she get paid, right? And I just want to make sure that the funds are available and we're not taking that ability to pay out. So is it going to be a combination of both, keep the budget?
Well, minimal. But you could also pay that out of the salary account.
Run a deficit.
Well, you wouldn't be running a deficit.
Only because you can replenish it before the calendar year runs out.
Right.
By the source of town meeting.
Correct.
Very good.
And it gives you that secure bank account that needs the two-thirds majority.
And the stormwater, we, this, I know there's been a lot of controversy over how things have been done in this town, but it's like $12,500 right now that's budgeted for stormwater.
But this is also for construction of and maintenance of. And it gives you a place if you need to borrow from the state. They want a fund that's totally dedicated for you to put that into.
And then we can draw out of that and pay it back as we, every year you put free cash or whatever into it. It would actually just be funding itself, funding. So if you only have 50 grand and at least you've got somewhere for those state funds or federal funds to come into it, right? And then you can expend it, but then you know that on a five-year plan, if that's the plan, that if it's 500 grand, you're going to throw 100 grand every year in free cash into it so that it's paid back.
Correct.
Okay.
And it also gives you the opportunity to pay for any of the engineering in the stormwater system that you need done because you can pay for engineering out of it, too.
And every year, I don't know if a lot of residents know this, every year we are responsible to fill out our annual report, inspection reports for our MS4 permit. So the town is subject to its own MS4 stormwater permitting. And those costs, we only have 12,5 budgeted now, but I've had discussions with numerous people over the last couple of years about this, and it could, depending on what they find in review, it could cost $100, $150,000, $200,000. And you don't want to be wiping yourself out trying to find $250,000 bucks. So by building this little stabilization account, you can do that. If you ended up coming across a $200,000 expenditure, you have the funds, and it's not like, oh, my God, where am I getting that from? Regular stabilization or whatever, right?
Correct.
That's the goal.
In my previous community, we went from $200,000 to $400,000 a year to rectify the MS4 problems.
Yeah, those are the kind of horror stories I've heard. It's not good.
No. And I'd rather get ahead of it.
It's nice that if you get the state grants, you could put it there, too. And you're automatically disqualified from it because you don't have the fund established, right?
Right.
Excellent. Thank you.
I also recommend that you contribute to the general stabilization, your capital expense stabilization, and your OPED trust fund. The amounts I'm recommending are just recommended right now after I did a back-of-the-envelope on your free cash. Until you actually know what your free cash is from DOR, you can't really put set numbers.
Correct.
But when you're looking at it, best practice is mandate that you contribute to your stabilization. And the bond rating houses say that you have to have between 4% and 10% of your operating budget equivalent in your stabilization account, or it will negatively affect your bond rating.
So in our case, that's around $3 million with a budget of $32,000, $323,000.
But we're right there, Wood.
Yeah, you're good. You don't want to go too far ahead of that, though, because if you get up to 20% of your budget, the bond rating house would be wondering if you were overcharging.
Funny, I'm already wondering that.
The capital expense stabilization, as I said earlier, paving is going up. Your sewer and water pipes are doubling in cost. You've got a lot of upgrades to do. I've met with the DPW superintendent and the planner. We're exploring grants, but beyond that, you're going to have to keep up with the infrastructure. It is one of the three most important things a community can do. And the fact you have a dedicated stabilization fund is good, but you've got to do all that engineering upfront, and then you've got to do all the construction. And the backend, you've got to do all the maintenance. And I know one member of this board has preached that gospel-- And I know one member of this board has preached that gospel to me consistently, but I've been preaching it in other towns, so I'm glad I found the kindred spirit that way because if you don't have potable water or you can't reach sewage, you don't have a town.
No.
And as far as the OPED trust account, I've been told the target in the next year to a year and a half is a million dollars, and I believe you're right on target.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
While we're on stabilization accounts and income and things of that nature, I like to go back to the earlier pages where Mr. Kelly gave us a breakdown under his memorandum in his opening remarks. And if you look at line item number 21, it's investment incomes, you know, we just talked about what we have in stabilization, it's just over 3 million bucks. And I had a conversation with Mr. Kelly, that's a pretty dismal number, we're only looking at $5,000. So I asked Mr. Kelly if this, you know, shouldn't we be doing better? And he said, we absolutely should be doing better, so just to strike that conversation.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
It's in the beginning of the book.
I don't know.
Yeah, where's memorandum's from?
It's right in the back of the town manager report, right there. You've got it right in your hand.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
That was our earlier conversation.
It's almost like you're earning a negative rate on 3 million dollars.
I know.
Is it in the money market account? I have no idea, but we should be doing better than .008. We should be banging, you know, I would think that we could probably do 100 grand, 150 grand a year, around 3 million bucks.
Well, this was when I was investigating the revenue projections I was originally given, and some things didn't make sense to me. And so I've drilled down a lot farther. And yes, you have an investment portfolio. We have discovered that in the treasurer's office, right, all of the company. And that is where I believe, looking at the amounts that your stabilization fund and maybe some other funds are invested, I, just looking at it quickly, I would say that you're doing okay, but you're doing a lot better than it shows here. So I'm waiting for the accountant to return to question why the investment income in this portfolio account is not listed in the revenue. I'm also looking for why when the auditor lists investment income, it goes, the general fund is 136,885, and the non-major governmental funds are 25,787. And we are listing as far as the recap sheet, 5,000 in investment income. And I will report back to the board when the accountant gets back from her seminars. She's at, the accountant and the treasurer collector both have to be certified. You'll have a certain number of years to be certified. You'll have to go to these three-day seminars to get enough points to be certified. The town accountant is there now.
Yep.
But when I see things that don't make sense to me, I'd like answers. And I agree with Mr. Gaspar, this, the fact that you had investment income listed in the past at 13, 14,000, and now I've got a projection from the finance team of five, I want to know why.
Right. I mean, even if you earn 5% on 3 million bucks, it's 150,000 bucks, something's on jive in there, right? And that's a year.
Right, right.
So, I mean, we could be self-funding something, just not on earned interest.
I believe that this might be for the interest earned in the various accounts if the money goes in and comes out of, and not the investment account. I understand that, but there's still no explanation of why we're nose-diving from 20,000 to 15,000 to five.
Correct. And what is my return on that investment portfolio? I would hope that it's closer to 5%, that it is 2% or 3%.
We didn't pass it out to them yet, but I have it right here.
Okay, so I've got the latest report from Bart Thalum, you know.
Looks like my consultants are on the line.
Okay, but I've got the latest report from Bart Thalum, you know, it'll be handed out to the board, and hopefully we'll be able to ask some questions of the finance team at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was shocked by the nose dive, and then, once I looked through some files, then I was able to ask the remaining members of the finance team, and they said they would need to defer to the town accountant.
You can find easy investment vehicles earning much greater. I can point you, I mean, that's what I do for a living, so, I mean, yeah, 5% to 8% is not unreasonable, and they're very stable investments, which means, you know, they're not fluctuating up and down like your individual stocks do. And it's big money if you, the more you raise on 3 million bucks, I mean, your compound interest could, you could make a million bucks in three years if you did it right.
The information that it was $5,000 on 3 million is...
Well, I don't believe it is.
Right, I can't believe that either.
Where's all my money?
But the real issue is, how did we go from 20 to 5, too? That's another question. As far as I can see, looking at the other account, the OPED trust fund, I don't know the timeframe for this, but just looking through the unit's numbers, it looks like at least 21,000 was made in interest for that.
Yeah, that's what, half a million bucks, I went 400, 500,000 bucks.
Yeah, 400 grand, right. Very good. Well, gentlemen, at this time I've been informed that our health insurance consultant is available, so...
Recede this meeting and reconvene in...
And executive. Do I have a motion to recess this public meeting and reconvene in executive session? You have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I do, we have to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, okay. Yes, moment? Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
Very good, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Welcome back, everybody. Do I have a motion to call this meeting to order out of recess?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we received a briefing from a town health insurance consultant concerning the situation that we have, and now we're back in public session, or public, yes, in this public meeting. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, taking off where we left off, I also have an article to fund the elder community service program. It's to be taken out of free cash, and it is the second part. The town originally created this program but hasn't funded it up to this point. In the article, it discusses all of the various limits on participation, qualifications for the individuals to become part of the program, and this program will be jointly administered through the Board of Selectmen and the Council on Aging and Director, who already does a lot of this type of thing with her eligibility programs down there. I also have a list of the capital articles that are in your packet. I'm asking that you review them, and if there are any questions about them, to get back to the interim town administrator. There's a second memo on operational recommendations. I'm recommending that if town goes out on RFPs for health insurance, workers' compensation, injured-on-duty and P and C insurances, legal services, engineering services, and audit services. You've seen sharp increases in a number of those services, and it's time to test the marketplace. For legal, you haven't been out in 10 years. For auditing, you haven't been out in five, six years. And for example, in auditing, you've gone from 30,000 to 40,000 in one year.
That's 25,000.
It's time to test the marketplace for all of these. And there's been some, I made a recommendation on structural reorganization. I've heard back from two members that you'd like me to tweak the plan and spread it out over a couple of years. I will do that and get back to you. And we're up to section seven.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something?
Yes, Mr. One.
About two things, but to Mr. Kelly, just want to thank you for two things. One, you timed administrative report at the beginning of the meeting, and then we had asked you to do, you're going to come up with recommendations on how to get this place up and running, and so I appreciate this. Really detailed, some of it is aspirational, but that's what we asked for. It's up to us to decide what we can live with and can't live with. But this is exactly what we need, is a structure and a roadmap to get this thing operating at the maximum capacity. So I just want to say thank you.
Very good. Back to our agenda under all business. We have mask mandates lifted for council on aging and library. I know there was some consultation, I know the library trustees voted to lift the mandate, and COA Heather made that request also. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to lift the mask mandate for council on aging and library?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. ...
Can I bring up something, it's kind of correlated to the COVID-19 thing. I've had some residents being concerned about the Zoom meetings, why certain committees are still doing Zoom meetings. Is there a particular reason why?
It's still allowed by the Commonwealth to use that option, but the control ultimately is with this board, and this board can amend the remote policy and/or suspend it.
And I think that, I think that, you know, in-person meetings are needed. I mean, everybody's doing it, everybody's back to what we call normal. I know the complaints were for zoning board of appeals, people trying to make those meetings, so, you know, I'd like some consideration on that to lift.
Okay.
We'll put it on the next agenda to suspend that policy.
Although I would say this, and then I've seen it in my own day-to-day life as far as work goes, it is a reasonable option in the event, you know, like not as a day-to-day practice, not as the standard for meeting, but I think to remove that as an option sometimes, you know, you hamstring yourself and...
Like looking tonight.
We had that go on with insurance providers.
That's different, we're in a public session, a public meeting, somebody wants to chime in via Zoom, they have the ability to chime in via Zoom, but, I mean, for, you know, especially with zoning board of appeals, I mean, that's, you've got a butters and everything else, and then you're trying to be heard, and if they're not being recognized on the Zoom thing, they have no say in it, what's the point?
Right.
I mean, that's the problem.
I could also look to see what a number of the communities in the area are doing and get back to you. Put it on the agenda to suspend the present policy and have me report on an amended policy.
Let's see what, let's give it some thought, and it's worth talking about, for sure.
Very good. Next under all business, gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the...
The settlement agreement.
The settlement agreement with Stephen Monae, so...
Mr. Chairman, this is a redraft. There was an issue with a filing done by the Mr. Monae, and negotiations between our lawyer and his lawyer. We wanted to specifically make sure that that filing would be withdrawn with prejudice. That has been accomplished, and now the agreement is ready for execution. What you need is a vote from this board and then sign, Lisa would have to get an original plus two copies signed, one copy you keep, and then the one copy goes to council and the other copy goes to Mr. Monae.
Okay, when you say vote, is it a roll call vote or is it a...
Yes.
Okay, so...
Prove the settlement agreement.
Correct, right. So, you know, roll call vote to accept severance agreement and general release between the town and Stephen Monae as a full and final resolution of the party's employment relationship, roll call vote, Mr. Monae?
Yes.
Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
And it'll also include a resignation letter.
Very good.
So we're not going to see this again, right?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
If we do, it's on him because everything was with prejudice.
That's right.
And that's a legal term.
That was supposed to be filled out.
Means you can't file it again.
That was part of the agreement, the original agreement, it was a form signed by the individuals.
Yep.
All right, next on the new business, we do have golf course rate increase, but I've been told that the golf course, the golf committee has not voted on this yet, so we'll have to wait till our next meeting to hear from what they decided upon. Vow within irrigation system approval from Article, Article 9, 2019, 2020 of $9,858. Do I have a motion to approve the vow within irrigation system replacement?
In the amount of $9,858, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second on the new business, I have a reserve fund transfer approvals, EMA $800 for town electronics sign batteries. So do I have a motion to approve the $800 needed for the EMA?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Fire Assessment Center, reserve fund transfer of $4,889 for the assessment center for the selection of the new fire chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is Department of Public Works.
Yes.
I've just been keeping that on the agenda as a placeholder because I, especially with all the pothole issues and the infrastructure issues, I did not want to have to go for a special meeting if we needed to get something done.
Okay, very good.
Considering someone who might be watching.
Yep. Selectment announcements, gentlemen?
There we go.
Good to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
I want to know, it's a brilliant idea. All this conversation with Congress trying to figure out, move the clocks ahead, move the clocks behind, I've got a brilliant idea. Why don't we split the difference and move them a half an hour and everybody's happy? I mean, it's a simple thing, bipartisan, we just still can't accomplish that in this country.
Bipartisan.
Blows me away, I'm like, really?
Blows me away, I'm like, really? Really? I mean, it's a clock. I mean, you split the difference, it's a half an hour, next time you do it, it ended.
Just don't go to Roman numerals.
Oh, my God, it's an embarrassment, but anyways, I'm glad the clocks are turned ahead, everybody seems to be in better spirits now that the sun's up for an extra hour.
Absolutely.
The weather's starting to break, so, you know, hopefully...
Summer will be here soon.
Hopefully we won't get rained on every weekend like we did last year, all the way up to the 4th of July.
Okay, for information only, the following boards, commissions have vacancies. Please consider serving your community by submitting a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. Agricultural Commission has two alternate vacancies. Beautification Committee, six vacancies. Community Preservation Committee, one, one housing authority vacancy. Cultural Council, 13 vacancies. Open Space Committee, one vacancy. Historical Commission, four vacancies. If you'd like to visit our town website at accretionma.us and look under Boards and Committees, there is a description of what each commission or committee does. Next, run to future business, Selectmen's meeting, March 29, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. Presentation of school budgets, discussion, vote on town budgets. There you go, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I know the school committee and the FinCom meeting, I believe, on the 23rd on the budget, just to let the members know, and the second thing to let the members know is on Fridays, I am going to a seminar on ARPA and how you access the ARPA funds under the newest federal regulations, what you can and can't do, and it's being facilitated by a person out of the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, and hopefully I've also got a meeting, Zoom meeting, scheduled with our ARPA consultant, and we can start to narrow down exactly what we can do, when we can do it, whether we need engineering and then shovel-ready, or how we can do it to get our infrastructure program moving.
That ARPA money needs to be spent by 2024 or something, or...
But there's two, there's two...
Revenue sources, right.
Avenues, one is through the county, one isn't, and to coordinate all that and make sure and have everything go through right, we've got to make sure all these, I understand, and I'll bring back all the information I can to you folks to understand what you need to do to do this right, because the feds have just issued their final regulations. I mean, literally.
That's Friday, that's Friday you're gonna go to that?
This Friday.
That's too bad, it's gonna be 70 degrees.
Gentlemen, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone, see you in a couple of weeks.